Call the meeting to order. It's Monday, December the 8th, 2025, 7:00 PM. And I want to thank everyone for coming out. It's good to see everyone. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. For our determination of quorum, it looks like everyone is here. Everyone is present and accounted for. Do we have any additions, deletions, adoptions to the agenda? Other than, I have one. Does anyone else have anything? What I'd like to do is move 9C of the consent agenda. I'd like to move that out of the consent agenda so we can discuss it if need be. And I'm going to ask Karen Walter, Karen Dewey, to decide where she wants to put it.
Go to...
A lot of pressure, Mayor. I think that's a discussion that I'll take advice. It's a discussion for old business.
Old Business. Okay, can we move it to, can we move?
We'll make it 10B.
10B, okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. We'll have moved that to 10B. Any, any, any else? Okay, all right, we're good. The conflict of interest statement. In accordance to State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every council member to avoid conflicts of interest. Does any council member have any known conflict of interest with respect to matters on the agenda? And if so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any participation in the matter involved. Any conflicts? Nope, no conflicts. Mayor and council member reports. Anyone want to go first?
I'll go ahead and get started. I'm going to take a little bit of liberty here and just read a few prepared words that I have. I want to begin by expressing my deepest gratitude to my family for your patience, encouragement, and unwavering support throughout my term, to my three little girls that are here. I know that sometimes that patience looked like waiting an hour in the grocery store while I spoke to a member of the community, so thank you for that. I want to extend a sincere thanks to our dedicated town and support staff, Leslie, Kim, Greg, Debbie, Karen, and Karen. Your professionalism and commitment to this community are the steady foundation upon which so much of our town's success is built. Jeff, I want to thank you especially for these past four years. It has been a humbling privilege to watch you lead, to witness your dedication firsthand, and to learn from your example. Your guidance has been invaluable to me. And to the council who will carry forward, carry this work forward, I offer my heartfelt best wishes. May wisdom, discernment, and a deep respect for the responsibility you hold guide your decisions on behalf of our town.
Jeff?
Well, the first thing I'll start off with is we did have our November Wuma meeting, a Western Union Municipal Lines meeting in Marvin. It went very well. I'll just say that during this kind of transition period, there will be a meeting or two before we kind of probably settle out with, with some of the positions. But the priorities that we identified for the next year for the group to focus on was number one, ensuring that we're going to have another opportunity for our Union County legislative representatives to come down and have a meeting in the evening like we did this past, past year in May, for the public to come out and discuss with them, you know, what's going on, hopefully before the short session starts next April. But we'll have to see about that. Secondly, having another meeting very similar to that where Brian Williams, the county manager, will come out and kind of a state of the county address to everybody, you know, to let us know what's going on there. And finally, to continue the discussion of whether or not to work as a group to engage a lobbyist on behalf of our municipalities here in the western part of the county with all the stuff that's going on up in Raleigh regarding changing zoning regulations and things like that. To finish, I would just add my congratulations to Clayton and Ellen. You have got an adventure coming up. So I wish you all well. I wish the new council well in their, in their terms. And just kind of echoing what Brandon said, you know, you'll, you'll, you'll see that there are times when there's things that you, you've got to really think about and, and please be fair. That's all I would ask. And that's all I've got.
Okay. Anyone else?
So I, anyone that watched the meeting last month, I was a month ahead of schedule, but I will just summarize what I had written last month and say that we really appreciate y'all's leadership and dedication to the town, everything you've done for the town. Myself and the town is indebted to, indebted with gratitude to you. Jeff has done eight years of the board and eight years beyond that on the, on the planning board, so, and then Brandon, thanks for your four years of service. We really appreciate it.
Okay. I want to thank the staff. They've done a wonderful job with Town Hall. It looks beautiful for Christmas, and I really appreciate that. I want to thank Brandon and Jeff for their service these number of years and congratulate the incoming council people. Looking forward to working with them. And with that, there's nothing to report on the road front that I have because with the state budget kind of semi in limbo, they still, the DFT hadn't figured out what they're doing for us yet. But thank everybody for their future service and past service. Thank you.
And I want to say too, Brandon and Jeff, thank you for all that you've done over the years. You know, sitting up here is hard. You know, you're doing, you're having to do homework, you're having, you're catching grief from both sides, and, and it's hard. And, and we all don't agree at times, and, but we, you know, we work together and we hammer out these things, you know, that we, that's presented before us. So I just want to say thank you for your service to the town and everything you've done and, and your hard work and what you've done. And it's, and again, it is hard, and it's not an easy thing, having a bull's eye on your back all the time. And so, again, we, we appreciate you and what you've done. So thank you. Okay? Okay, we're going to move forward to the public comments. Okay. Debbie. Before we start public comments, Rita, this is the rules for public hearing and public comments. Public comments are limited to four minutes. Public hearings are limited to three minutes. Comments are to be directed at the entire board and not individuals, nor the public attending the, the meeting. And I've said numerous times, you know, once someone's making a comment and it turned that way, I'm going to stop you because the comments are directed to be directed up here and not back there at your neighbors. This is not a podium to berate your neighbors. Designated a spokesperson for the group, three or more may be allocated, six minutes to speak. At least three members of the group must be present, and names and addresses of the members present must be submitted to a town clerk before the meeting begins. Other than pursuant to this rule, you may not give your time or another speaker to, give that time to another speaker to increase your time that's allotted. You must be civil in your language and presentation and act within reasonable standards of courtesy. Use of slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening speech or behavior is prohibited. The audience must maintain order and decorum in their conduct. Please refrain from any disruptive applause, comments, or disorderly speaking during the meeting. Disturbances will not be prohibited, will be prohibited. The mayor or majority of the board may suspend these rules at the discretion. Failure to abide by these rules after receiving notice by the mayor may result in, one, termination of your comment period and/or removal from the meeting. Okay? Chad, come on up.
Good evening, Chad Emmerich, Eagle Road. There were two things I would just wanted to mention tonight. The first is in regards to the bond release for Weddington Glen. In the packet, the bond release form mentions, as one of the checkboxes, executed operation and maintenance agreement for the stormwater recorded in the final plat. In our UDO D804C, it describes the maintenance agreement required for final plats, and in line three, it states, "The maintenance plan shall specify required insurance and all maintenance and operating costs, and shall define means for funding the maintenance plan on an ongoing basis." Then in Part Five, it states, "In the event that the open space and associated common facilities are not maintained in accordance with the approved maintenance plan, the town may recover escrow or bond funds used for those." This is in regards to your open space and stormwater areas. After attending meetings and hearing Weddington Glen residents at some points express their concerns, I'm asking the town to look at this and see if the maintenance agreement has been properly accorded and shared with the HOA so that they know what the plans and associated costs are. Based on this, I would ask that the council, like you did for Enclave, delay this for 30 days to allow this to be investigated and ensure that the HOA is well aware of the maintenance agreement and all their costs. The second thing I just wanted to ask is if the council would consider updating the rules of procedure for public hearings to allow four minutes for public comments in a, as, to match general public comments. In public hearings, you're often dealing with rezonings, and residents may have a lot of points that they want to make at that point, and it can often be more detailed and time-consuming to express that. So I just wanted to see if you would consider changing that to four minutes to match general public comments. Thank you.
Okay, cool. Thank you, Chad. Joyce, Joyce Plon.
Good evening. This is just a thank you. I want to thank all of you sitting at the table for your service over the years, but I especially want to thank Jeff and Brandon because this will be my last public opportunity to do that, and I want you to know personally how much I have appreciated your leadership, your integrity, your professionalism, your willingness to confer with me. You always were responsive when I would reach out to ask questions or discuss things. So I want to thank you both. It, it has been a challenging few years, and your dedication, your sacrifices have not gone unnoticed. Jeff, I particularly want to thank you for your leadership of Wuma. I think that's an important group and needs, and our participation needs to continue. And I appreciate that you've, you stood up and led our town in being an active participant in that. So thank you both.
Thank you, Joyce. John, John Schick?
Good evening. I'm going to apologize upfront. I'm going to look down and just read off my comments, okay? So I'm not going to look at what you guys. I'm John Schick. I live at 205 Doranok Drive, directly behind the Weddington Glen development. This letter is being written regarding the bond release for Beechwood Homes pertaining to the aforementioned subdivision. Last spring, we started to have persistent sediment and water flow issues that appeared to be caused by the grading work done by Beechwood Homes in the field adjacent to our home. The silt fence in the field above our property and behind the homes built by Beechwood had fallen and remained that way for over two years, with large soil piles and unmanaged weeds contributing to stormwater and sediment flowing toward and onto our property during heavy rains. At that time, we contacted the town, Lobella, and Beechwood to find a remedy. Despite initial promises to fix the problems, such as by adding a culvert stabilizing the field and/or correcting water flow, nothing was ever completed. This left us to do a huge amount of work on our side of the driveway easement in order to redirect and correct the stormwater and clean up the sediment issues. Scott Morrison made out to discuss a settlement, came out to discuss a settlement to help cover some of our costs to fix the property as a good faith gesture. No mention of a specific dollar value was given at that time, but we communicated that our preference over a lump sum payout was a permanent fix to the field where the problems were coming from. After that, all mention of a settlement was dropped until months later, when Bob Cardos told us the amount they had initially proposed was going to be $10,000, but that he had been told we refused it. We have never been, we have never been sent any legal documents officially offering us any compensation. It is hard to refuse, refuse something you haven't formally been offered, and we would certainly accept the $10,000 to at least partially compensate us for work we've already performed. Why, why were we never presented with this formally? Is this offer still on the table, and shouldn't it be signed off before the bond is released? We in good faith would like resolution to those questions in the next two months and request that the town attorney act as a mediator to complete the contract for final compensation. Once that is complete, the bond could be released. Beechwood continues to claim there was nothing wrong with the engineering of the field, yet to date, it still hasn't been signed off. Why? Attempts as late as last week have been implemented to cover old sediment with hay. Sediment continues to wash into the culvert and onto our property, but so far, at least the changes on our side are keeping it diverted away from the front of our property. Lastly, since this field will become the HOA's responsibility after the bond money is released, and since there is a third party, the cell phone tower, that complicates the situation, we again solicit that there should be a maintenance agreement in place codified by the town that clearly defines who should be responsible for maintaining each aspect of the easement going forward. For example, who is responsible for mitigating weeds and how often? And more importantly, who is responsible for clearing the two culverts and dishes, ditches, and how often? In summary, we feel it would be appropriate to hold the bond until both the paperwork for a settlement is signed and a maintenance plan has been filed with the town.
Okay.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Okay. That's all the public comments this time. We're going to move on, and we'll come back to the subject here briefly in, in a moment. Public safety report. Deputy Ren, come on up. Or should I say Sergeant Ren?
Come on up, Sarge.
Congratulations.
Mayor, many council members, it's super intimidating. So one of the big things that we really tried to focus on is thank you so much to the public. Tonight, I really get to say thank you a lot, not only just because of the holidays, but you've shown a ton of love to us here lately. It hadn't gone unnoticed, thank you. Congratulations are in order, not only to you all, but to you all. Thank you so much for not only supporting us, but your continued support. We can't say thank you enough. That's also coming from the other deputies who just can't be here tonight. So we'll go ahead and start off with the multiple 911 hangups. So we typically have around 40, but this, this month, or in the month of November, we have 59. Could be a continuation of, what we looked at was a lot of sporting events within the area. Weddington High School, once again, was going for that state championship. People putting it in their pockets next to their electronic hand warmers, sending off the SOS, things of that nature. So that's where we saw a little bit of our spike. The Weddington High School football team is doing really well, or was. And now the basketball team is doing really well. So that's where we've noticed a lot of our hangups. They're going to continue because people are going to get the new electronic device, the new watts, things of that nature. So we're, we're, we're going to see that spike in 911 hangups. So if you see us in your area, knocking on the door, that could be what it is. We did see a pretty good increase from 28 to 32 vehicle wrecks, that is to include with injuries. We had a pretty good one right in front of Lenny Stadler. We just happened to be running light R operations over there. It was a larger truck, attempted to hit the brakes, just didn't work out too well for him or the person that he slammed into. It was a pretty significant spill. We had Monroe hazmat team come out. They did a fantastic job. Can't say thank you enough to those guys, and that's the cooperation that we get. We also had Union County Environmental Health come out. So they were able to take some soil samples and things of that nature, just because it was five or more gallons of any type of fluid, could be radiator fluid or anything of that nature. So I got some questions about that. That's what that was. No big spill, no, no nothing serious, but they still came out and did their evaluations and management. So we typically had about 20 alarms. We went from 24 to 34. The reason that we saw the big spike of 34 was mainly because of the inclement weather we've been having. If you notice, even tonight on this beautiful night, during storms, it's going to do different things to different people's neighborhoods, to the, to the power systems. Power's going to flicker, it could reset your CPI, your ADT systems. It's automatically going to send it out, even though it's via Wi-Fi, we're still coming out. So that's why we saw the big spike there. Business checks, we did step up from 44 last month to about 60. Holiday season, we really want to try to be in the parking lots. Hopefully, the bad guy sees us instead of your presence in the back trunk. Disturbances, we went from eight to 13. Once again, that's mainly just because we want to get out there and let you call it in. Hey, let us know. Instead of you just saying, "The neighbors are fine, that's just Timmy and Suzie again, call us." It could be something else, and that's what we encourage you to keep doing. Even though the numbers are going up, we're still responding. Domestic disturbances stayed around four. Larceny thefts still stayed around four. So we're still seeing that same number. We're still working on those numbers about getting them down. Prevented patrols, that's us getting in your neighborhood. That's us saying hey to the kids. So it wasn't just Halloween and us out there handing out the stickers and things of that nature. It's us staying in your area. Last month, we did 581. We went ahead and stepped up to 821, especially at night. Christmas lights are beautiful, but that gives interior lighting, so that gives a bad guy a chance to look in a little bit more. Suspicious vehicles went up to 15 this month, so the trespassing galls went up by one. So the Google Fiber and things of that nature, they should be out of your way, they should be out of your hair by now. So we had two last month, now we've only had one. In the month of October, we answered 1,095 calls for service. In the month of November, or I'm sorry, October, 1,095, and November, it was 1,255. So the sporting events and things of that nature brought in a pretty big population. But not only the sporting events, but people coming in transient through other counties and things of that nature, so we're seeing more vehicle wrecks, more traffic patterns and things of that nature. So we're trying to get out there a little bit more. With the holiday season upon us, not only Amazon, if you are out shopping and you're coming home and you're like, "I'm going to stop at the gas station real quick if I have to go home," grab you a small little blanket, cover up those presents. You paid a lot for them. We're not seeing any smash and grabs, we're not seeing anything of that nature, but let's get ahead of that storm so we don't have to. I know this sounds really weird, but I really want to hit this home. If you are not home, get a chance. There is a study showing when you shut your blinds, look at the way that your panels are. The panels are facing up, it's more difficult for someone outside to look in. Christmas trees are absolutely beautiful. We get it, we know it, we love it. You paid a lot for your tree, you want to show it off. But we encourage you to maybe do it at night. If you do it at night, people can still see it from the road. This may not be McAttonville yet, but it's beautiful. But it's the small little things like that, the nuances, that we can get ahead of the storm. Flipping so your blinds are up, and even go to the outside of your house and say, "If I was a bad guy, how would I do this?" Another thing that we've been seeing is if they do do a smash and grab, we're contacting Mecklenburg County, and Mecklenburg County is seeing an influx of people grabbing garage door openers. They're just driving around, seeing if you live in the area, things of that nature. So you, you never know when you, you're even, you know what, I'm not going to report it. They didn't even get anything, you know, new cars have the remotes all ready, things of that nature, but we'll go ahead and get ahead of that storm. So once again, thank you so much. I hope you get to enjoy your holidays, and we appreciate all your help and support.
Sergeant Ren? As, as you heard, Deputy Ren is now Sergeant Ren, got a promotion. And so this is your last meeting with us?
I hope not.
Well, you're moving, moving on.
We'll be here in spirit. We never leave, we never actually leave weddings. Yeah.
So where you, tell us where you're going.
I am super fortunate, and I kind of put in a little favors and called in some things. Our detention facility. So unfortunately, I won't see anybody from anything because nobody's coming to jail. But yeah, no, I'm super, super enthralled and very excited and pull some strings to get down there and get back to the jail.
Well, we want to say thank you so much for all you've come to do.
Oh, no, sir. Thank you.
Being here each time and, and just, again, all your, your service to the town.
Oh, complete opposite. Thank you.
Can, can we give another hand?
Thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? Okay. Okay, all in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. We're going to go into old business. The first one, the first item of old business is an amendment, it's CZ 2025-03. It's amendment for the REA subdivision. And we're going to open it up for a public hearing. And Debbie? Public hearing is open. Do we have anyone who signed it for public hearing? Maybe Chad? I see Chad, Debbie? Thank you. Chad, come on up.
Good evening, Chad Emmerich, Eagle Road. In, in regards to the adjustment for wells, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. It's very uncommon for homes of this price point to be on wells and have public sewer. Wells have maintenance that many homeowners of this price point are not well informed on. It's too late for this project, but I would wonder if the council would consider changing the UDO in the future to match the requirement for public water to match those of major subdivisions. Right now, major subdivisions greater than six, and this ordinance of the requirements of whether you use well or Union County water, it's greater than nine, which this development falls under, so it complies with the UDO. In addition, the county has steps in addition to gaining those easements, and in speaking with county managers, they have, they're reluctant to get involved in acquiring those easements if it's under the jurisdiction of a town. So based on that, I was just wondering if council would look into the steps that the county uses and see if those could be incorporated into our UDO that would assist in developments to work on the easement process so we don't have more of these situations of developer already getting approved and then having to come back to the council to get an adjustment like this. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, Chad. Anybody else before we close public hearing? Okay, public hearing's closed. I'm going to ask the, Bob, can, was anyone here from Arcadia to discuss this? Come on up.
Hi, Jeremy.
Hi there.
And the reason that you're wanting to do this, can you explain the reason why you're sort of coming back?
Yeah, and for, for one, for what it's worth, also, we've built Arcadia Homes. Some of you guys may be familiar with our, with our company. We've built really hundreds of homes around the Charlotte region, probably even more than 100 in the Union County region, and very, very many of which have been on wells, but even very many have been on public sewer, but also well. There's a Sedgeville community not too far from here that is set up that way with public sewer and well water for the domestic water. And then I believe Walder and Providence has generally set up that same way, where we've built a number of homes even recently and are going to be starting another one soon. So you're right in that it is probably more common to have either both public sewer and water, but certainly not something that we're unfamiliar with. And you're right in that it's important to educate clients about whatever maintenance might be required, but we, we're intent on doing that. And so the reason in this case, why we are seeking, and what we're seeking is the ability to have the option to either have well water for the domestic water or the public water. So it's not a definitive decision at this point that we've made that we're going to go away from public water necessarily, but we think for the, quite frankly, financial viability of the community, there's quite possibly the need for, to go with well water versus the public water. It is a pretty extreme expense for the, for the public water facilities. We are going above and beyond, which we discussed in one of the prior meetings, for the, I guess, reclamation, you might call it, of the existing dam. So kind of above and beyond what would be required by the state, but we anticipate that in the near future, the state will probably require more restraining requirements as far as the securing of that dam. So we're taking on those, that expense, and so one of the factors that we believed per the UDO that we would have the option to do would say perhaps we'll do well water because our experience is that we can do that from a marketing standpoint. I don't think it's incredibly detrimental, and we know how to, how to do it, frankly. And so it's more of, you know, again, being still compliant with the UDO, having the option to do one or the other.
Gotcha. Okay. And I'm going to ask Greg, our, our town planner, can you speak into this as well? Greg?
Thank you, members of council, Mayor. So as, as Jeremy stated, the, the matter at question here is the option to do well or public water. or public water. So, this ordinance, this subdivision has already been entitled legislatively by the Weddington Town Council. This is not a large subdivision. It's nine lots, give or take, an existing lot that's already on the property.
For what it's worth, there, there is one on property that's already on well water. It will remain on well water. And there's another, there's actually two houses on property, both of which have a well right now. And our intent would be to maintain both of those wells and really only add seven more.
And, and so, the note on Jeremy's point, he stated financial viability. That is no interest of the town of Weddington or our staff. We don't care how much your project costs, but we do care if you comply with our code. And code states that if you have ten or greater units, you should connect to public water. If you have less than ten units, you do not have to connect to public water. The reason this is before you today is because they're Exhibit 2B, and their ordinance stated that they would connect only to public water, Union County water. They would just like the option to connect to either war. They're not saying, "We're not going to use Union County water." They're saying, "Because of the financial difficulties, we want the option to use wells," in which it's proven on the site that there are existing properties that have utilized wells and existing properties they have developed that have utilized wells in the past. So, I don't want to overcomplicate this matter. This is, this is not a text amendment to our code. This is not an exception to our code. This is not a waiver of anything that they're doing. This is not a favor for them. This is saying that they didn't state that they were going to use wells in the ordinance that they approved, that you guys approved. And so, we are approving the ordinance, we are amending the ordinance that you guys approved to say they have the option now to use wells, which because of their low density and low lot count, they are able to do. So, this is basically a clerical error. This is to say that because they're such a small subdivision, they said they weren't going to do it, but they are actually allowed to, and therefore, let's amend the ordinance to say that clearly they are allowed to utilize this, this utility.
I make a motion to amend the agreed on, what, what was I going to say?
Approving the amendment for the Aria subdivision.
Approve the amendment for what?
We're going to approve CZ twenty-two-five-dash-zero-three.
Before we do that, does any of the council members have any thoughts or comments or, you know, discussion on this? Nothing? Okay. Okay. So, we can move, move forward with the motion.
So, I motion to approve the amendment of the CZ two-oh-two-five-dash-o-three amendment for Aria, how do I say it?
Aria.
Aria subdivision.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. All right. Unanimous? Okay. So, we're good?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Jeremy.
We got to, the land use.
What? Yeah. And, and we, we did it with, with the consistency statement, right? Or do we?
You'll need to, you'll need a motion to approve.
Okay. Okay. Exactly. Yeah, can I get a motion to approve the consistency statement as approved or as stated in the packet?
I make a motion to accept the statement of land use consistency in the package provided.
Okay. All right. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Move forward. So, we, we're good? All right. Okay, we're going to move on to the discussion of the release of the bond of PR, PRF ninety-three seventy-seven one seventy-seven for Weddington Glen subdivision, in the amount of four-hundred-and-one-thousand-two-hundred-seven dollars and fifty cents. But we have a council. I'd like to have, uh, Bob, can you speak into this if you don't mind? And state your position and who you are, if you don't mind?
My name is Bob Wilson. I'm from La Bella Associates, and I represent the town in engineering matters on development sites. We had a final inspection of the Weddington Glen subdivision on Tuesday afternoon to review some things that we've identified at previous inspections that still need to be addressed. Based on the fact that the roads have been accepted by NCDOT, I think back in April this year, the water and sewer has been accepted by Union County Public Works, I think in August of this year, and our findings at the inspection, in fact, we actually got an opportunity to see the sand filter in operation because it had rained that day, and it was functioning properly. We recommend release of the bond. We feel like they have fulfilled their obligations under the bond, which is guaranteeing the road improvements and the stormwater control measures. So, those have been constructed to town standards and meet the requirements.
Okay. Does, question, does this, what, where you're still here, any kind of runoff from this subdivision affect other properties like as in the Schick's, who was up earlier?
There is runoff from subdivision that affects the Schicks. The area is a, a grass field. It has been seeded multiple times. It has a very good stand of vegetation on it. Even with a standard grass, there will be some sediment yield over time, and this is kind of what happens. So, I feel that they have fulfilled their obligations under the road control ordinance to have this area stabilized, and we actually looked at that as well.
Do, do you feel in your mind, is there's anything else that can be done to alleviate that problem or any kind of problem that may persist, persist? Is everything been, been done?
Everything has been done per code. I cannot speak to the matter of between Mr. Schick raised and Beachwood. That is a matter between two individual parties. I cannot speak to the history of that or discussions related to that. Any knowledge I have of it is hearsay through emails, obviously.
Okay. So, anyone here representing Beachwood? Want to come on up? And again, state who, who your, your name and who you represent.
Good evening. My name is Scott Morrison, and I'm the director of land for Beachwood. And I apologize, I wasn't extremely prepared to speak tonight.
Sorry to catch you off guard.
That's okay. I'm extemporaneous. I agree with what Bob has just said about our standing as it relates to the bond. The bond very specifically covers the stormwater control devices. I'm also sensitive to the other remarks that were made by Mr. Schick. This is not a, unfortunately, and I know you've been involved, Mr. Mayor, you've been involved, Tom, Karen, the, everybody's been involved, and I think everybody's been involved because we all care. That it, because we all care, doesn't mean there's an easy, an answer. The, the facts are, La Bella has said that the activity on Beachwood property has not negatively affected the adjacent property, which happens to be where John and Barbara Schick live. The engineer of record, Isaac's Engineering, has said through its analysis and its seal and signature that the pre-development and post-development discharge off-site of stormwater is net zero. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has been on site, and they have said there is no impact from Beachwood's property onto the adjacent property. The North Carolina Department of Natural Resources has been there, not providing comment. I believe Action Nine or some similar news agency was called. I would love for there to be a problem that was obvious that we could say, "Do this." But what came up before is just doing something isn't the right thing to do. And so, when things were offered, like put a ditch in or do this, okay, to what requirement? State the requirement so we can design the fix that the requirement needs. There is no requirement. The bond, the bond, excuse me, the bond release fulfills our obligation by the construction drawings that are approved and to the town and by extension to the state for all the various stormwater requirements in the road as Bob was talking about. The bond release is also what I'm using as the predecessor to the turnover of the HOA because I don't want to turn over an HOA to our residents if there's any unfinished work. And that's the reason that the HOA hasn't been turned over yet because we've been built out, we've, we've been closed out for sales for some time. The HOA turnover is scheduled for later, the mid-part of January. The HOA budget is provisioned currently, because I checked today, for maintenance and all the various things that need to be done to make sure that the various devices are maintained perpetually. The operation and maintenance agreement that was brought up has been recorded, has been signed and recorded, entered into everything else. I believe it was in December of either two thousand twenty-one or twenty-two. Actually, looked at it today, but I didn't think I would need it, frankly, tonight. So, all of our documentation is in order, and we're ready to go to release the bond, turn the community over to the, the homeowners, and that's really it.
Okay. Okay. I want to ask Greg to speak into this, if you don't mind, Greg.
May I, may I sit down or shall I stay for a minute?
Uh, you can sit down. If we need you, we'll call you back. It's okay?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, yeah, this is for the release of the remainder of a bond for approximately four-hundred-thousand dollars. The initial bond was for three million dollars, and that money was released prior to me even working here. So, five-sixths of the money was already gladly released by this council prior to my service of the town of Weddington, and there was no issues brought up at that time. Basically, immediately when I started, there were many issues that were raised in this community about Weddington Glen, and the money had already been released, which is extremely frustrating. I've spent more time on this property than I have anywhere else in Weddington by tenfold. I have been in the field. I have been on the streets. I've walked the sidewalks. I've walked, walked the culverts. I've been in the mud. I've been everywhere on this property for numerous hours because that is the right thing to do for the due diligence of our town, our taxpayers, and the members of this community. There are numerous issues with the property that do not involve the town and do not involve taxpayers. If there are lawsuits or building controls or conditions of the siding, what have you, those are not things that involve the town of Weddington. What does involve us is the status of the roads, the sidewalks, the culverts, and the pipes. So, did they bond for what they were supposed to build? And through La Bella's analysis of mine, they have built what they were supposed to build and what they were supposed to be bonded for. Does water run onto various properties they do? Is it channeled the way it's supposed to? After a lot of discussion, it does. And so, the matter at hand is, has Beachwood met the obligation of providing infrastructure to release four-hundred-thousand dollars? It's my opinion that they have. Is this a perfect project? No. Have we learned lessons from this project? Yes, we have, particularly about how we interact with our community and how builders interact with our citizens. But what we're obligated to do in this case is release one-sixth of the money that we've already done, and through roads and infrastructure, they have done that through numerous inspections and site work that has been completed by town staff and, and La Bella Associates. And so, I, I do not see any reason not to release these funds. However, this is a cautionary tale about how we release funds in the future.
Gotcha. Okay. Any council want to comment?
I guess my question is, the maintenance agreement evidently has been signed and filed. Do we have any idea, is there any requirement from the town to ensure that the maintenance agreement is, ability is funded or will be funded? I don't want, I don't know if that has anything to do with this or not. Not just my one concern, is to make sure that this is funded to where it won't come back on the town if the HOA doesn't have the funds to maintain the, the property.
It's going to be up to the HOH to fund it. So, they will have annual, let it happen, part of their HOA dues goes into a reserve fund for this purpose.
This is sinking fund, correct?
Yeah, that's, I think what we call it in our ordinance.
Yes.
So, yeah, that's, that, and that will, that will be a continuing obligation, just like every other neighborhood that's got stormwater. As part of their dues, they will be contributing to these reserve funds.
So, that will be between the community and what Beachwood puts in initially to seed it.
Right.
And that's a contractual agreement between them, effectively, when they, to turn it over.
It's a transfer of ownership, so.
Yeah. To turn it over, they have to have it funded to some reasonable degree, I assume.
Correct.
Yeah, that, they've, they've been funding it, and so, whatever, however that's been funded is what they'll get. Well, we know as of today, nothing's broken. So, they're getting what is effectively brand-new infrastructure that we signed up on Tuesday. So, they should have, so they, they should have plenty of time to continue increasing that sinking fund over time so that they, to be, and it will be the HOA's decision on how much they believe that they need to maintain.
But they've been given the estimate of what it should take annually to?
And that, that's, I'm sure that's part of the documentation that flows with the transfer of, of control of the, of HOA.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, Mayor, for example, if I may add to that, the section D nine, eight-oh-four, excuse me, D eight-oh-four, it talks about establishment of an HOA and funding that HOA, and that primary trigger is the final flat process, basically the carving of those lots. So, that would be before lots are sold. You know, you have to have an HOA established. You have to have a maintenance fund. And so, that would, in this case, be several years ago where that kind of agreement was made. I think the reference was twenty-twenty-two by the advocate discussing that process. That's when we, you would look at that, and then, you know, an HOA has been established for years, but it's in maintenance of the developer. And now, we're at the stage where that HOA maintenance is now transferred to the people who own the homes and will maintain their community. And it's, in my opinion, you know, it's, it's better for the town to clear all the items in question now while the developer still owns it, so we hold them accountable rather than to give it over to the HOA and then release the bonds. Because by releasing and stating on fact and on record that these maintenance items are in satisfactory condition, where we're saying that, you know, homeowners, we're saying it's, it's good and satisfactory condition today, you should have no worries about taking it over today.
Yeah. Thank you, Greg.
Right. Yeah, and my concern is, is just like what you said, Greg, I, I don't want to leave the, the homeowners, the, I'll say it like it's the new HOA, the residents holding the bag in case there's something wrong. That's why I want to make sure we've, we've got everything covered with Beachwood and with, with Bob, with La Bella, make sure, you know, all of our, you know, i's are dotted and t's are crossed, and, and make sure that fund is seeded. And, and there's enough there because I know the town is not responsible for the, the HOA. We're not so responsible for homes and just the infrastructure, and correct me if I'm wrong, to, to a certain degree. And, and so, I suggest, and Scott, I want to have you come back, just one, one more question here in a second, because I want you to elaborate on something. It's, it's, when the HOA, or when the management's turned over to the HOA, in my opinion, the, the HOA, the New York, the residents, or that board should be really working with you. And my question's going to be how to open up, and we got a lot of emails today, and we read them all, and we, we, we looked over everything. How, how is Beachwood going to work with the, the homeowners, the new HOA for openness, transparency, laying it out there? You know, here's what we've, we've got, you know, here's, here's our numbers. Again, I don't want them being left holding the bag and then not knowing what's going on. And I would suggest to the, the homeowners, get involved, you know? A lot of times, people will claim there's a lack of transparency when you can't do anymore. There's all kinds of transparency. They're just not involved, and I totally get that. So, from the, from Beachwood's perspective, how can you work with them better so they know what's going on? Does that, does that make sense? I know I'm rambling on, but I just want you to.
No, I, I appreciate your comment. And so, a few things. One, this is not my first HOA, unfortunately. Okay? And so, in previous positions at other companies, at one time, I think I was the HOA president for some eleven HOAs where the declarant still was in the control period. And so, the, the process, number one, is not a just knock on the door, leave a bag of stuff and run. It's, it's not at all. It is a deliberate time where the HOA management company, in this case... HOA management company, in this case, is managed by a woman named Diana, Diana Kennedy, with key management notifies the residents that, hey, this is coming. They've already been notified that this is forthcoming. And so, kind of implicitly, there's people that are kind of making their moves, they want to be on the board. And so, when that first meeting happens, if it takes more than one meeting, it can, because it has to be a discussion. The budget is presented to them, and the budget is presented really as an educational, like, hey, this is your budget. You, you have HOA dues, it's a fixed amount, and we need to figure out how we can continue doing the same thing, because ultimately, this is going to be their decision. They can maintain the same level of landscape maintenance, or they can reduce it. Many times, we find that they rebid the landscape contractor, because they're like, this is too much. I found out today when I was talking with Diana Kennedy, that the, some of the residents, that maybe as a, a parting gift that we put in maybe bigger plant material at the front entrance. And I said, I think we definitely can talk about that. I'm happy to do it, but just remember, you'll be maintaining it. And so, there's, there is that. So, currently, the budget is, it balances like all HOA budgets should to net zeros. You have $84,000 coming in, and you spend $84,000. Now, of the $84,000 budget, not all of that is spent. Some of those are to the reserves that Karen was talking about. So, currently, there's some $23,000 in reserves. And I'm going off the memory, I emailed actually, Greg, our budget just also is a point of transparency, something I've never done before in terms of setting a town, my HOA budget. But, so, that's the seed money, that $23,000. Now, for, for the maintenance of stormwater devices, in my experience, usually the maintenance is years down the road when something has to be overhauled, meaning if there's a pond, it has to be mucked out, you know? The, but the, but the general maintenance, it doesn't require a lot of maintenance. The sand filters are pretty benign structure, it needs to be raked. The wet pond has wetland plantings, they will, some will die, some will live, that will need to be better plantings. So, not, there shouldn't be a lot of monthly maintenance, for instance, on the, on the, on the stormwater devices. The, the other aspects of what happens during that turnover is they're given all the plans. So, they get the signed construction documents that we all have, and in those plans, it shows the details. It shows what are the plant varieties, it shows all those things. It shows where their property is. It says to them, hey, this is a field, be careful, don't do anything, you know, remember you have neighbors that you may have unintended consequences if you change something in the field. But it's your field, and as long as you don't run afoul of the, the open space requirements and the, and the, you know, the non-velt upon area, then you can do things. And so, that, we turn over this, this big file, both in paper and electronically, and then, we're still there. As they work with key management, we are unpaid consultants, just to make sure that they don't do anything crazy. They can, but we would just say, just be careful, this is what we found. Because we do find that many times, HOAs are like, oh, we're so glad that you're out of here, we're going to make all these changes. And the next thing you know, the reserves are gone, there's no money, they have to do, you know, a capital assessment, and it can just get really weird. We, we, we do work sincerely to make sure that doesn't happen. One final note, and Greg and I exchanged emails today, because he gave me a little bit of a heads up that this was going to happen. Prior to the HOA turnover, we don't, as a matter of practice, do all the budget across the community. And this community is only 35 homeowners, but we have another community that has 215. There's too many cooks in the kitchen to manage an HOA budget if you have 215 cooks in it. When they, and then when they get their, their board together, they will decide how transparent they want to be on a daily basis. They may say, look, we're going to give you the monthly report, just like the declarant has been doing, or they may do it a different way.
Okay.
But that's, hopefully answered your question.
Yeah, okay. Question for you, you mentioned the plantings at the entrance. Weren't there supposed to be some kind of plantings around the stormwater pond, too, to sort of hide that? Was, was that in?
Not hiding it, no sir.
Just?
There are wetland plantings that are required and have been planted.
Okay. So, those have already been done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
In, in fact, the wetland pond has a trail around it, so we were trying to draw attention to it.
Okay, gotcha. And so, you, so you will commit to doing something nicer at the entrance?
I will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bob or Greg, any other comments that you guys would like to add to this? Okay. Counsel and comments? And, and I will say too, just to reiterate what I said earlier, the HOA needs to work closely with you guys to, to sort of, you know, to get an understanding of the workings, where you're at financially, where the numbers are. And, and that's, and we don't get involved in that as, as a town, just FYI. And so.
Yes, that's my only point I would add, is that we maintain that it is built to standard at the time that we inspect it and that time we release the funds. We explicitly do not maintain, own, operate, address those issues. We ask that HOAs send us a maintenance report of those ponds every year to show that they're in good working order, but they are, they are HOA responsibilities at that time.
Okay. Counsel, any more comments or anything? I can get a motion to go in any direction?
I make a motion to approve release bond, PRF 9377177 for Weddington Clinton subdivision in amount of $401,207.50.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. All opposed? Okay, one opposed? Okay. All right, we have three in favor, one opposed. Okay? And the motion, the motion passes? Okay? All right.
Have you excused?
We're good, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, item, item 11. The acceptance of Union County Board of Elections official results from the municipal election November 4, 2025. Can I get a motion to accept the election?
I make a motion to accept the Union County Board of Elections official results from the municipal election, November 4, 2025.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, so all in favor, unanimous, so we've accepted election results? And so, we have item 12, special recognition of District 1 Councilmember Jeff Pearman and District 3 Councilmember Brandon Howey. Is that something, Ms. Dewey, you'd like to present?
We have a small token from the town of appreciation for all of your time and your effort and your energy and the time away from your families and, and your general good humor. Thank you for everything you've done for the town, for the staff, and for, for being who you are.
Yes, and again, thank you guys.
Small, small tokens over there. It's kind of a bag. If you have anything to add, but you guys already did, so.
We, we sort of did, but I'll say again, thank you.
Okay.
Is that Debbie, is that something you're going to present now?
Can you get by with it?
Can we give them, yes, thank you. Okay. We're going to move forward to the oaths of office. Okay? I go first?
You're up, Jim.
I've got one.
The one you got to sign.
Well, that's why if you guys want to take one home.
I did mine just for, for me.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm marking that.
Well, now I've messed it up, so we'll just go this way.
All right.
Raise your hand. Aye, aye, Jim Bell.
Aye, Jim Bell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Discharge.
Three years. All right, do it.
Uh, Clayton Jones? Would you like me? Okay. Aye, Clayton Jones?
Aye, Clayton Jones.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As council member, so help me God.
As council member, so help me God.
That's it.
Make solemn.
This, this, no, this one.
I think you're a good lefty.
Can't breathe, not right.
Ellen? Aye, Ellen?
Aye, Ellen McLaughlin. Aye, Ellen F. McLaughlin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
And I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not be consistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As council member, so help me God.
As council member, so help me God.
Well. Okay, at this point, we're going to take a small 10-minute recess, and then we'll call, we'll come back to order and with our new council members. So, we're going to recess at this time, so. Jeff?
Thank you. Good luck. You're welcome. Well, you guys, just keep doing what we need to do, keep telling. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Jim, thank you. Yeah, I've got to read over the next couple of years. Sure, sure, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll send me the token.
Hey, Jeff and Brandon, I have a gift in there for you guys, too. Are the councils? No, I mean, a cane, a thing in there, so pick it up, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, awesome. I love it. Thank you. Thank you.
We don't need Bob anymore for anything.
Are you going to do your official position? So, we're like all watching, like the kids were asking, asking each other, I mean, some of them, like they were like, we, we spent, we wasted so much of our lives.
Yes.
Yes, yes. So, it'll be really interesting to see. But when I saw that, I looked at Scott and I was like, like, of all my, not that the boys don't get in that room in trouble, because I'm sure, but like, the amount of trickery with. Oh, so I looked at Scott, I'm like, she knew me very, like, the boys I had, they didn't sell them to the national, because she was a baby. So, I had to know when they would get out of practice, so I, she doesn't, so she's going to be, but that's what I mean. I mean, she finds ways already to use, because like I saw some clients, I saw your TikTok, I was like, your TikTok, I was like, you know, you have it, she has arranged it, so she certainly got like, her, she has, and they're all, the boys, like, they're like babysitters, whatever, and, um, so she still finds sweet ways to do it when she doesn't have any devices. She's funny.
No idea that this is going to happen, my kid's 29, so no idea yet.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, like the kids, first one. Yeah. Well, and those were safe, right? Like you could, you were fine. They were, like I'm at, texting you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and start?
Yeah, yes.
We're going to go ahead and get started so we can, so we can get out?
Take one and bow, players.
Okay. And we can arrange seats, he's just sitting on the end because of, trying to get out. Okay?
Let me get this up for you. These are tricky.
He's got the photos.
Helen, were you in this? Helen, were you in this?
Had surgery on Wednesday, came out Friday. Everybody was left.
Yeah, so we. So we have a call to order. Uh, termination of quorum. It's like everyone's here, so we're all accounted for, since we just had the swearing in. The consent agenda. Uh, the adoption of the 2026 council regular meeting schedule. Okay, does everyone have that, that schedule? Did everyone look at that?
That's all in the package.
Yes.
Okay, you saw it in the package. Is everybody okay with that?
Make a motion to accept the, the, uh, meeting schedule as presented.
Okay, all in favor to accept the schedule as presented? It's unanimous? Okay? Uh, town hall holiday schedule. Did we all see that?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept that?
Make a motion to accept the holiday schedule as presented.
Okay, all in favor? Okay? Uh, Darcy, you're thinking about it, or?
Oh, sorry, no.
Yeah. All right, thank you. It's unanimous for the, uh, holiday schedule. The appointments. Uh, the appointment of Mayor Pro Tem. That will be Tom Smith. We'll continue on as Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, the appointment of the delegate and alternate to CRPTO. Uh, I will continue on as the delegate to the CRPTO, with, uh, Tom being the, uh, the backup or the alternate for that.
Mayor, we need to vote on the Mayor Pro Tem.
Oh, we need to vote on the 20? Okay. All right, so the Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, all in favor with Tom being Mayor Pro Tem? Okay? And it's unanimous? Okay? Well, except for Tom, I guess. I can vote for myself.
Yeah, he can vote for himself.
He can vote for himself, so I guess it'd be unanimous then, right? Okay, the appointment for a delegate and alternate to the CRPTO. I will continue to be the delegate with Tom being the alternate. Can I get a vote on that? Okay, it's unanimous?
And just, you do not need to vote the others. That, that.
Pardon?
Mayor Pro Tem is the statutory position, that's why they're required to vote. The rest of these two.
Oh, we don't need to vote on the rest of them? Okay, all right, good, thank you. Okay, appointment of council members responsible, or council member responsible for opening, uh, our mail. And, uh, that's, that's gonna be Ellen McLaughlin. Uh, the council member, uh, reviewing bait statements. And that's gonna be Clayton Jones. Okay? Uh, appointment of council members as check, uh, signatory and backup. Uh, I will continue to be the, the primary, and, uh, Darcy will continue to be the, uh, backup for, for the checks, for the mail. Okay? Uh, appointment of Western Union Municipal Alliance Representative and Alternate. Tom will be the primary, but Ellen is the backup. Ellen McLaughlin is backup, alternate. And I'd like for, for them to both work that, you know? So just because as an alternate, it'd still be, be good for both of you to be there to add your input, to represent the town. So if you could work together on that, that would be fantastic. So, um, uh, so, okay, so moving on to the new business. Discussion of dates for Town Council Work Session Retreat.
I don't work on other dates.
Yeah. The, uh, I don't know if you guys have thought about it. It was January, it's Thursday, Friday. Either January 29th or January 30th. Thursday, Friday, February 12th or 13th. Thursday, Friday, uh, February 19th or 20th.
So I will come right off the bat and say, January does not work for me. It would have to be February.
I'm better with February, too.
February's better, okay.
I have no conflicts with any dates, so whatever y'all choose is okay with me.
February 12th. I think it's 12th, 13th, 20th.
So it'll be February something. I'd prefer a Friday.
Because of work schedule.
Yeah, work schedule, but, uh.
So it's a one-day.
Yeah.
One-day retreat.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Uh, Friday, Fe, this February 13th. And, and Darcy, you're looking.
Friday the 13th.
Superstitious.
What could go wrong?
I don't want, yeah, really.
If the 20 is, we wanna be, it's a Friday. It's a week later.
Oh, so when, okay, so we. All right, so we can't do that. Uh, do you have any problems with the 13th, Darcy?
Yeah, I'm looking real quick. I had it written down, and I didn't grab it.
Okay.
And I just threw those out. If there's, if the 6th or the 27th work better, that's.
Okay.
I don't know. Fr, I mean, Thursdays are usually much worse than. Fridays are the worst for me, but I, there will be one Friday I'm not working. I just have to look, I can't log on right now, so.
Should, can we go ahead and say Friday the 13th?
You can.
Okay. Um, can we? Let's say Friday the 13th right now. And, uh, can you let us know by tomorrow?
I can let you know tonight, sure.
Okay.
And where's, what, what time is the thing?
Night and the morning.
We start early, start at nine, go to about 3:00, and I'll work on Rolling Hills.
Yeah, okay.
It was good over there last year.
Yes, yeah, it worked good.
You wanna.
Okay.
Have an alternate date, that, uh, if that doesn't work.
Not if Friday's, I mean, no. Because if Friday's the only day that works, then I'm just gonna have to look on my schedule when I can log into it.
Okay.
I, I was planning on a January date on a Thursday, or a Thursday. And then you guys messed that all up.
I'm better, I, I'm good Thursday or Friday, it makes no difference.
Yeah, I can make Thursday work, so.
I can, we'll plan on the 13th, and I'll let you know if I can.
Okay, does that work with you guys?
Well, all the dates work for me.
Okay.
So it's either be the 12th or the 13th, and y'all will settle it.
Yeah, 12th through the 13th.
Yeah.
And that's up to Darcy.
Whatever works.
Okay. Um, all right, so we're gonna move forward on this. Uh, updates on Town Planner and County Administrator. Either one.
Lost my notes. Um, CRPTO sent, nope, that's not it. Sent the list of the, um, State Transportation Improvement Plan, and it had the Forest Lawn and Potter Road roundabout. They are, um, in right-of-way acquisition right now, and they anticipate letting to bid for construction in '27. And I, I know, it's a little late than I thought.
Do what?
The bid for construction, they're gonna.
'27?
Yeah, that's what it said. Um, and I saw the same thing for Providence Road. And the Ray Road right-of-way right now is in hold for the Duke easements, utility easements being marked and moved.
So you're saying that up there, the light, that we approved 3?
No, this is not.
No, this is.
Oh, the round, okay, okay, I was confused, thank you.
And I haven't heard anything about the light.
Okay, now, I was wondering about, if you hear anything, let us know about the light.
Same.
Question, when will we need to pay our money? Or what, what obligation do we have?
I have to go back and look. I think we may have been, we may be done with that.
Okay, I thought we'd paid some already, I wasn't sure.
And construction, we don't have to owe anything for the construction cost, because it was covered by a grant that.
Own that light?
Yeah.
No, the, um, roundabout.
Roundabout.
Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, the roundabout, yes.
So, no, I think we're all even on that. I need to confirm, but.
Question, do I need to get sworn in as Mayor Pro Tem, or is that?
You do.
Okay, just wanna make sure before we quit.
Gotta make sure.
I, I'd just like to add, as far as development projects go, uh, as far as council members, yeah, we'll have these up as a, uh, physical diagram starting next month. If I restart it, we have a clear order of operations and clear order of, uh, applicants that we've received. Uh, there was an item that was tabled last month that will return to you next month at the applicant's request. Uh, so this is off of Forest Lawn. And then we have several other subdivision applications coming thereafter, so it will be a fairly busy kind of spring session. Uh, and I'll keep you all, uh, very aware of those development projects as they're submitted for their final, uh, application and review for completeness. And then, you know, we discussed the bond at length today. We will continue to receive more bond requests for, for multiple projects. We'll, we'll keep you in detail of those as well.
Okay.
I have a question. The development on Forest Lawn, is that Keystone?
Correct.
I thought they withdrew their application.
That's correct, so.
So if they withdrew it, why don't they have to reapply?
So they, uh, did not state in the clearest methods, uh, that they withdrew. Uh, they stated that they would come back in an undetermined period of time. And then shortly thereafter, they stated, we would like to come back now, please, which we told them, you can get in the back of the line of applications, but we will still consider your initial request, because the project hasn't changed.
My recollection of the Town Council meeting, it was stated on the record that they withdrew their application.
They did not type it in the email. They said it on the phone.
So they said it on the phone?
Well, he said, yeah.
He said, yes, that we were withdrawing.
It was, yeah, we do not have, we do not have a clear record. And because of that, we have, the, you know, the tie goes to the developer.
Very much, they're, they're looking to come back next month.
Perhaps there should be some form that is filled out to. That would be, you would have expected an actual form of withdrawal that we did not get. So you would. Well, for any, either shifting for, uh, to another date or remove all the application.
And I don't wanna get too in the weeds, but, uh, a withdrawal is important typically because it's saying, hey, if I withdraw early, I have more time to reapply later. You know, I would be able to reapply within six months, whereas if my credit was denied, I would have to wait a year. Amendment is a general statute, uh, and Raleigh has made that kind of null and void, so that kind of thinking doesn't really apply anymore. If you're denied, you can immediately reapply.
Well, my biggest concern is that I don't want to cut short any public comment on it. And I noticed that their zoning sign disappeared. They aren't the yellow zoning sign that was up there. I mean, I like the hills, I'm not generally opposed to it.
It will all be.
But, but I, I don't want the citizens to be cut out of the loop or the comment.
And they will be, they, it has to be, they have to go through the whole process again.
Okay.
If that sign's not up there today, please let me know, because.
Well, I haven't driven by there today, it's been cold, and I didn't go anywhere with loads today, so.
And, and Greg, can, and if, and you may have said this, and forgive me if, you know, missed it, but, uh, even the minor subdivisions, can you keep us, start keeping us informed of where those are, and what's in the process, and that kind of thing, even with the minor?
Yeah, we, yeah, we've got, uh, numerous projects under review with us in La Bella right now. Uh, we will, we will get those online as they're applied for.
Okay, cool, thank you. Okay? Uh, anything else? Is that good with you guys? Um, code enforcement report.
Uh, I'll just say it's in your packet. Um, there are several kind of big cases that are underway right now, um, that have required additional enforcement mechanisms, either posting on a door or sending notice of significant fines. Uh, those are still underway, so, uh, we are aware of those. We have issued kind of our notice of violation, second, third, final violation of at least two issues. Uh, we're hoping to get those resolved as soon as possible, but, um, it's, it's not been quieted, there's two, at least two significant issues going on.
Okay.
I have one question that might go to one significant issue. I remember several months ago, I believe, Craig, you reported that there was a unbuildable lot that needed to be cleaned up because it had a bunch of debris on it. And that the estimate was, it was gonna be about $6,000 to clean it up was.
That's accurate, yes, sir.
Uh, and because it's unbuildable, we're concerned that there's no way to force the landowner to clean it up at his expense.
Or to, if we, if we pay to clean it up.
If we pay to clean it up.
Putting a lien on the property isn't gonna pay.
Do any good.
Exactly.
But is there a way to perhaps take them to the Small Claims Court and have a court order them to clean it up?
Yes, and we can also take them to court to collect. So even if we do, we, we have, we have, um, somewhere at Bateman.
Wouldn't it be cheaper and easier to have a court order them to clean it up instead of us having to lay out our money?
Depends how long they want it to go through the process, but, yeah, yes, it could be.
I know, but small claims, we're not talking about going through District Superior Court. We're talking about, well, should, should be a relatively easy process.
In order to get, we have to go to, um, District Court to get the order of abatement issued.
Okay.
Um, so it starts in District Court, and then it would be a matter of if the order would have, or order them to clean it up. And if they didn't, the remedy would usually be that we would clean it up. Um, it'd be, it'd, it'd, that, that's usually what the judge would issue. It's town then has the right to abate it and leave the property. We would have to just fix that whole.
Will you just clarify something for me? We can't just shortcut it through Small Claims Court, we gotta go through District Court.
To get the order of abatement correct.
All right.
Okay. All right. So all with code enforcement. Okay, update from Finance Officer and Tax Collector. And I'm gonna, we're gonna swear you in before we get a public comment.
Leslie is out today.
Okay.
Said she will give a six-month update next month. And if you have any questions, shoot her an email. And everything's in the packet.
Okay, all right, good deal. All right, Transportation. I'll give that real quick, and then we're gonna swear in Tom. Uh, just, uh, an FYI, just a couple, couple things. Before, 485 Express Lanes, now DOT said, you know, December. As you see, they're still not open. Now they're saying February, so 485 South Charlotte, DOT is in February. We'll see. Uh, hopefully that, that, that will happen. Also, at the last CRPTO meeting, um, it was standing room only. Um, a lot of people were there protesting the I-77 South Express Lanes. As you know, there's 77 North, and, uh, that was, everybody feels, and is in agreement, that was totally messed up in various ways. Uh, just, just an example, the, uh, the, the section between, uh, Exit 23 and 25, uh, around, uh, Huntersville is the worst bottleneck in North Carolina. And it's the 37th worst bottleneck in the whole United States. So, and that's according to DOT. And so there's a lot of messed up stuff that went on with that road, uh, even from tolls being too expensive. So, uh, at the last CRPTO meeting, there was numerous people standing around the walls, everywhere, holding up signs, kill the project, that kind of thing. So, uh, it, it's, 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 it's a mess. Um, just to give you a little FYI, 77 South, there's over 150,000 cars a day that go up through there, through South Charlotte. Um, and it gets, gets higher as you go in, of course, downtown, up to 172,000 to 181,000 cars a day. So something has to be done. Um, so, um, so, but DOT is saying that on, on average, there's about 150,000 a day through there. And the accidents is two and a half times the whole state average for that one section of 11 miles. So it's, it's a mess, so, uh, what CRPTO is working on right now is getting bids. When we did the 77 North, there was only one bid. It took the, it took the one bid, and we see what we got. So they've been under a mandate now, it's like, we're gonna have multiple bids, or we're not gonna move forward. You gotta get multiple bids, so we can see what we've got going on. And so that's where that's at. And, uh, and so, uh, that 11 miles is estimated at $3.2 billion. And it's crazy for 11 miles. It's the most expensive, expensive project North Carolina has ever done, and probably will do for a long time. And the state will only allocate $600 million per project like that. So there's no way the state can afford to do it. And especially with Helene, uh, all the money going up there. And that's, that's around $4 billion in itself. So, uh, it's, 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 it's crazy. So, uh, swing, anyway, that's, that's sort of my update for, um, Transportation. Let's get you sworn in real quick for, uh, the end. I had the wrong one. I, Tom Smith.
I, Thomas J. Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
I will support and maintain the laws of the state of North Carolina, the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Mayor Pro Tem.
As Mayor Pro Tem.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Tom. You're good.
Thank y'all. We're still good stuff to you. Thank y'all. It's really good.
Okay, as we move into closing, council, closing comments. Uh, who wants to go first? How about one of you guys?
Waiting first.
Yes.
So it is an honor to be here. Um, and I look forward to uh, some exciting things ahead and uh, look forward to working with all of you and county staff as well. So um, thank you for your warm welcome.
Okay.
Hard to top that, but uh, I wanna thank everyone, particularly the, the town staff. Uh, communication with you thus far has been very helpful. It kinda helped me get up to speed. I appreciate that. And uh, I'm looking forward to, to working with the staff and the other council members and Mayor Bell.
Okay, thank you Clayton. Ellen?
Uh, thanks to the staff for amazing Christmas decorations and the job you've done with all the developments this year and all the changes this year. We really appreciate it. And welcome to Ellen and Clayton. It'll be fun. It'll be a blast.
I, I wanna welcome Ellen and Clayton as well. I wanna thank the staff for the decorations for Christmas. We had a great uh, Christmas tree lighting. Really appreciate it. I look forward to maybe having it in a better place in the future. Uh, to where we have more room and a safer place. And I wanna thank all the people who came out tonight uh, for being here and wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Okay. And I will say, I will say thank you. Thank you for another opportunity to serve this great town. This election uh, is a shared testament of the future of our town, preserving Weddington for all the reasons we moved here for. I'm deeply humbled by your support and aware of the responsibilities you have given me for the next term. This council and I, the previous council, have accomplished a lot in the last two years. And rest assured, now with the present council, sworn in council, um, uh, we're no close to being finished and we have a lot to do. I ask that the residents continue to stay involved and reach out to your district council member whenever there's a thought, idea, or even a concern. Let's all continue to work together to make Weddington the kind of town with the class chara- character and value that we're all proud to call home. Again, thank you. And with that being said, um, and can I have a?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? All right. We adjourned. Thank you guys for being here.
So I have some clarity on dates. How far do you have?